I believe. A K A O K A M motto a Komoto. Can you identify what project you're here for tonight? Okay. A Komodo Komoto, I think that's.
Uh, that's the applicant for for the owner for 1086.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Uh Chair Bishop. I have everybody accounted for for two people. I think we're ready to start.
Okay, so you'd like to proceed now? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So welcome to everyone on the phone. This is Design Review Commission, August 4th, 2021, and we're starting the meeting a bit late at 7:09 PM. So first item on the agenda is to establish the quorum, and I believe we have all five commissioners here tonight, but I will do the roll call for the record. So Jude Kirk.
Here.
Sam Harding.
Here.
Michael Ma.
Here.
David Blockus.
Here.
And Frank Bishop. So let the record show, all five commissioners are present for tonight's meeting. Okay, next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. Guido, do we have anyone tonight who wants to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda?
No one has indicated that to me, Chair Bishop.
Okay, then with that, we will close that section of the meeting, and we'll move into the section Items for Consideration and Action. First item is the Consent Calendar, and on tonight's consent calendar, we have four items, and I would like to try to approve all of these at once if we can get a motion to do that. So four items are the Design Review Commission meeting minutes from July 7th, the Design Review Commission meeting minutes from July 21st, and then SC 210028, 637 Hawthorne Avenue, to relocate a second-story window along the rear elevation of a two-story home, and SD 210006, 1086 Eastwood Court, and it's a design review for a 275 square foot addition on the first story and new windows on the second story of an existing two-story, single-family residence. Would one of the commissioners like to make a motion to approve all four of those items?
Chair Chair Bishop?
Yes.
I, when Guido was taking the information on who was calling in, I did hear somebody was here for the Hawthorne Avenue project, so I don't know whether that was for or against.
Yeah, I believe that's the owner, so I would assume that they would be fought, but Guido, could you confirm that that's who that is? That was Saloni.
Yes, I have to mute. Um, the property owner is on the phone.
So unless the property owner would like to speak on the item, I would like to have one of the commissioners make a motion to approve all four of the topics, including 637 Hawthorne Avenue. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Would someone second it, please?
Second.
Okay, then we'll take the roll. Jude?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And Frank Boats. Hi. So that clears up the consent calendar. Making paths unanimously. Okay, now we'll go into the discussion section, and I know we have a number of people on the phone tonight for the the first item. SC 190016, 41 Marvin Avenue. I believe Sean, you have a report to share with the commission?
Yes, I do. Let me get it ready for you. Sorry. There we go. Good evening. Good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. The project before you is a designer view application for a new two-story house with a basement. The project includes 1,982 square feet at the first story, 1,464 square feet at the second story, and a 1,767 square foot basement. I don't know why it's doing that. The slide provides a schematic rendering of the proposed two-story house. The subject property is located on Marvin Avenue between Pepper Drive and Eleanor Avenue. The surrounding neighborhood is considered a diverse character neighborhood as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The characteristics are derived from the homes which were built in different time periods by individual owners and developers. The homes in the immediate context are a combination of one- and two-story houses, with two-story houses at 21 Marvin, 60 Marvin, 70 Marvin, and 108 Marvin Avenue. Exterior materials are commonly stucco, wood siding, trim, wood trim details, with the exception of Spanish tile at 90 Marvin and 80 Pepper. The residences are predominantly low-scale with simple forms. However, there are a variety of homes with varying scales, for example, at 21 Marvin Avenue, 60 Marvin, and 101 Marvin. The neighborhood is diverse due to the lack of complete uniformity in the neighborhood and the variation of housing designs over the various time periods. Landscapes in the front yard are a variety of of material. The house is designed to be consistent with the with the standard, with the development standards of the R110 zoning district. It complies with floor area, lot coverage, setback, daylight plane, basement standards and setbacks, and parking requirements. The project proposes, project uses a more contemporary architectural style, materials in those found in the surrounding neighborhood. Staff believes it is designed to relate to the houses in the immediate vicinity. The project incorporates design materials that are found in the neighborhoods such as low-pitched hip roofs or defined entries, and the deal tailing and materials are high-quality. While immediately adjacent residences are are primarily lower-scale with simple forms, there are a variety of homes, as stated previously, 21 Marvin, 60 Marvin, 101 Marvin, that are a greater scale and greater variation in complexity and form. While the windows appear to have greater verticality, there is a variation in window pattern found in the neighborhood. An example of more vertical windows can be found at 21 Marvin Avenue. Overall, staff believes the design incorporates a more contemporary style with simple elements, quality materials that produce a thoughtful integrated appearance that is compatible with the character of the area. According to the residential design guidelines, a house should be designed to fit the lot, should not result in a home that stands out. The proposed first floor plates include 10-foot, three-inch first floor plates along the front elevation and exterior side, 10-foot, nine-inch plates along the interior side and rear, plate heights for the secondary or nine-foot plates. The first floor plates are taller than the average found in the immediate existing neighborhood. However, the applicant has utilized many of the bulk reduction measures that's called out in the design guidelines, which include incorporating architectural elements to soften the elevation, minimizing the use of two-story design elements, and keeping second-floor exterior walls low. Consistent with the design guidelines along the front elevation, the applicant is utilizing a is breaking up the elevation with projecting balcony, variation of wall planes using fenestration, articulation of the first and secondary wall plane, the use of more than one material on the elevation to break a vertical mass, and the use of vertical planners. In addition, the side setback is greater than the required setback for the exterior side property line. Along the exterior west side, or I should clarify, along the front property line, but along the exterior side elevation, the building's massing is broken up with a salt box roof form along the first story, the second floor being recessed in the first floor roof form. The green patio roof feature and variation of wall planes allow for increased increased variation in the wall plane, and the use of more than one material helps to contribute to a breaking of the vertical mass. Along the interior east side, the building's massing is broken up with the second story being recessed in the first floor roof form, the projecting balcony, green patio roof feature, again, variation and fenestration, and and increased setbacks from the standard setback of 25 feet. Along the rear south elevation, the building has a larger expansive wall plane, which may be perceived as contributing to the overall massing. Consistent with the residential guidelines, the applicant has proposed to reduce the appearance by varying the wall planes using fenestration, and again, articulating the wall planes. On the, let me try to. On the front south side elevation, there are five windows, a French door with side light and three panel sliding doors. The windows are oriented towards the public right-of-way. There are no potential privacy impacts from the windows. The door does exit onto a large balcony, which is 27.25, wide by 4.75 to 13 feet deep, primarily faces a public right-of-way with a secondary view to the interior side yard and house at 101 Marvin. The balcony size does not comply with the four-foot standard or recommended standard for residential design guidelines. It's considered to be more active in in nature. And while the balcony has a second-story setback of 23.25, there may be a perception of potential privacy. However, the applicant is retaining the existing evergreen screening along the side property line and the existing mature trees. Staff believes provides a reasonable degree of privacy from adjoining properties, and therefore, staff does not believe it creates a reasonable impact, significant impact to the front property line or to the side property line. On the right side elevation, the applicant is proposing two windows. They're both four foot eight inches. Staff does not believe they will create significant impacts to the neighboring property. On sheet A3, on sheet A3 is 30C, provides elevations of illegal, non-conforming accessory structure along the exterior side, which is being retained by the applicant. The applicant is maintaining 15 of the 21 trees on the property. A complete list of those trees are in your plan set, and they are proposing to remove six trees. Those are also described in your plan set and in your staff report. With the existing new trees, new landscaping and hardscape, the project does meet the city's landscape regulations. 41 Marvin is also currently not listed as a historic resource in any historic inventory. Historic resource evaluation was prepared for the property at 41 Marvin and was and was prepared by the city to be potentially eligible for historic, to be a historic resource. The structure must be more than 50 years old since the subject property was constructed in 1920. Staff consider whether it would qualify as historic. The four criteria for assessing historic significance are conveyed in your staff report in applying the criteria for eligibility and for listing in the National California Register and applying the destination criteria for historic resource and historic landmark. The HRE, prepared by Garavaglia Architecture, found the subject property to not display a level of historic significance or integrity to qualify for either the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register of Historic Places. And furthermore, 41 Marvin did not display significance or integrity that would qualify at the local level. Furthermore, the city hired Architectural Resource Group to prepare a peer review of the Garavaglia Report. ARG also conducted additional archival research, supplementing the Garavaglia Report, and they also concluded the home is not a qualifying historic resource under either the state, federal, or local requirements. Staff did receive 24 letters from residents who supported the project and also did not believe the current house is a historic resource. Staff received 11 emails from residents who raised concerns regarding the house potentially being historic and/or raised concerns regarding the scale, bulk, and design character of the proposed house. This concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions, thank you.
Okay, Sean, thanks. It's Frank. So one of the things that I think we wanted to do was to have Jude make an announcement where he's within 500 feet of the project before we go.
Yes.
Jude, did you want to?
Yes, I apologize, Commissioner Bishop. I got caught off guard by all the consent calendar items, but I will have to recuse myself from the conversation as I live within 500 feet of this this property. So I will not be able to participate. Thank you.
Okay, so please, please come back when we complete this for the for the next item on the agenda.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, Jude. All right. All right, Sean, thanks again for the in-depth report. From that, I guess the next thing we'll do is ask if any of the commissioners have a question of Sean. So again, I'm just going to work from my list here. Jude has left. So Sam, did you have a question?
I do. A couple of questions having to do first with the background and then the design review, the paragraph. The paragraph neighborhood content, context, I think should be stronger representing the that particular house and its place on the street. There's no mention of the, some people feeling that it has a historical basis and that many of the letters that I saw were concerned that that had not been followed. The second is in the design review, paragraph two, results in a home that that stands out in the neighborhood. Well, the the design of this home has been quite a bone of contention in the neighborhood, and and from my observation, really does stand out. So was that, did you, did you know that you would get as much feedback on that, Sean?
So in regards to the issue of the character of the house, the city conducted significant, significant evaluation of the property, both by two historical firms, and they both determined that the property is not historic. As indicated in the staff report, the National Park Service establishes the standards for a qualifying historian. The parties that did the evaluations were both qualified historians under the National Park Service standards, and so we relied upon their analysis, and that's the central reason why character of the house is not raised. It has not been found to be historic. In regards to the context and the house in regards to its scale, you know, staff believes it is a different architectural style for the neighborhood. Typically, architectural style and character are not evaluated by staff. We look at issues of scale and bulk and mass and issues of of the comprehensiveness of the design in regards to the style of architecture and whether it's cohesive design. If the commission believes that the structure is out of scale or has particular design-related issues, then the commission can raise these issues during the course of your discussions and provide appropriate direction.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Michael, questions for Sean?
Yeah, okay. Sean, I have two questions. One is the the existing garage, based on the staff report. It's a non-conforming because of setback, and then they, the the architect and the owner are just gonna update it with a new material and keep it, right?
Correct, and there in the project plans is an analysis in regards to 50% of the structure being retained. So the plan is to maintain at least 50% of the existing structure under the city's non-conforming regulations. It's not permissible to remove more than 50% of the existing structural components of a building, including the foundation, the roof, and the structural walls on the exterior of the building. The the detailed diagram, I believe, that's in the plans, do reflect that, and so it will be updated to try to tie back directly directly to the house. Exterior modifications in regards to materials is not something that affects non-conforming status of the building.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. The second question that I know, I mean, this is a corner lot, and I noticed the daylight plan, it's actually shown on A3.08 on the south elevation. That's the front. While the, actually, the main entry door is on the the side street with elevation. So because the the configuration of the lot, the deeper sides, consider the front of the deeper side, the longer side is considered the front, right? That's why the the daylight was shown along the the side of the house, not actually the front of the house, but it's actually just the front of the property.
You're muted.
Yeah, so I know, I realize. So so the daylight, so in regards to issues of determining front, front of a site or front property line is determined per the definition for for front property line, and that determines that a front property line is the narrowest frontage of a property. And so the nearest property line results in the frontage being oriented in the direction that it's allocated. Front door location is not a determiner of the front setback. So the front door is is noted to be on the exterior side, and then the side yard or interior side yard is on the opposite side of the exterior side.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Michael. David?
Hey, Sean, I got a bunch of questions for you. So could you, I understand, but you know, we got a lot of feedback from neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. In regards to tree removal, there are a couple of heritage trees that are going to be removed. Could you explain, just in generalities to the public, what the removal of tree for economic or other enjoyment of the property is?
So economic and other enjoyment of property is is utilized for the removal of trees that interfere with a potential site of a building or improvements that are occurring on the site. The expectation is trees that are utilizing the the economic and other enjoyment allowance under the tree preservation regulations is really only permissible if there are no other viable alternatives for preserving the trees. And that's the basis for economic and other enjoyment.
Great, thank you. Couple clerical things. On page four, paragraph five, it talks about along the rears, and it says south elevation. Is that actually the south elevation or is it the north elevation? It talks about the top of the page, the front south elevation, the west, east, and then paragraph five along the rear slash north elevation. I think that means the north versus the south. Would that be correct, or am I off? I don't hear you.
Sean, Sean, you're muted.
So the, sorry.
You're still muted?
Still muted, Sean.
Okay, the front is the south, the rear is the north. The interior side is the east, and the exterior side, which is where the front door is located, is the west side.
Right. Okay, so then on page four, where it talks about the seconds, the the fifth paragraph is actually the north elevation, not the south.
Yes, you're correct. So I apologize for that error.
No problem. And then page five, we're talking about condition 11 in the second paragraph, and then there's another condition number, and it wasn't in there. The condition blank confirms the project. I'm assuming that's condition number 11 as well.
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, sorry, that's clerical. Just wanted to make sure. Question I have is, what is actual square footage of the upstairs deck? Do you know what that is?
No, I do not have that square footage. The architect is here and it potentially could answer. If not, I can calculate that really quickly, if you'd like, and get back to you.
Yeah, I want to get a sense. I've got it over a couple hundred square feet. And a secondary question would be, is that encumbered into the floor area ratio or is that outside of the floor area ratio?
It is not counted towards floor area cover. It's not counted towards floor area as a calculation. Floor area is calculated when it's covered area and it has three or more walls of covered space. Okay, or I should say it has four walls. If there's if there's one wall, if there's one area of a structure that's open air, then it's not counted as floor. It's kind of just as coverage.
And what is the exterior lighting situation for that patio?
I do not have exterior lighting details or cut sheets. The city currently does not have a lighting policy in regards to fill candle requirements at property lines or a standard in regards to light on property lines or at sites. So we don't have any details for that. I'm sorry.
Okay, and then lastly, just to confirm, the property has, has it ever been designated any sort of historical resource, designated anything in the past? Obviously, currently, it appears there isn't, but there's nothing in the past. There is no history based on the many documents that is part of the project that it is not a historical property.
And and none of the previous historic resource inventories, going back to 97, has this property ever been deemed a historic resource or historic landmark, and it's not been declared a Calif, it's not been designated historic under California standards or national standards.
Okay, and then the second follow-up question would be, you know, typically, we dealt with a lot of two-story additions that the neighbors don't want a two-story, and so they're like, well, we're going to go ahead and apply for a single-story overlay. And in previous cases where that has been brought up, that application for a single-story overlay would not apply to that particular application. Let's assume that this could be potentially a historical house. It's not designated as such. Is there a process, or would we even consider it if, say, the applicant said, oh, I want to apply for a historical designation, or a neighbor wants them to apply for it, but the application for the two-story redesign rebuild is already in the process? Would we go back and say, nope, we're going to hold up the process on this to allow them to further research and do whatever due diligence a neighbor thinks is appropriate or whatever? Or would we, similar to the single-story overlay zone, say, nope, this has already been through the process, you can't then subsequently stop a building because you want it to be a special designated home? Do you understand my question?
I hope so. So so once the, if I don't answer, please let me know. So once the Designer View Commission, if they do approve this project and it moves forward to a building permit stage, and a building permit is issued, and the applicant is vested with that, right, with that building permit, it would be very unlikely and possible to to then go back and and modify that unless the applicant wished to pursue historic designation. Now, our historic regulations, historic preservation regulations stipulate that that the parties that that must apply are either the homeowner must apply and request designation of a site. The city council has the authority. Also, the Historical Commission has the authority to request a review and potential designation, and the Community Development Director has the ability to make a request that a project go forward to the Historical Commission. Part of the reasoning in that staff completed the historical evaluation was for us to understand. Part of the reasoning in that staff completed the historical evaluation was for us to understand whether this property was historic or not. And the reports that were completed by historians that met the national standards under the National Park Service, both of them deemed that this property were not historic. Uh, otherwise, if it was deemed historic, it's very likely we would have moved it to the historical commission at some point.
Okay. Great. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, hey, Sean, I guess that's everyone but me. I'm going to come back to the question Sam asked, uh, in your write-up about that the house should be designed to fit the lot. It should not result in a home that stands out in the neighborhood. Uh, again, you know, back to what Sam said, given the response that we have here, this, this house is going to stand out in the neighborhood based on its design and based on its placement, uh, on, on the corner. And so my, my question is just a little bit, I have two, two parts to the question. One is, do you think the, uh, the city spent enough time with the applicant on the design side of things? Or did we get derailed into the historical side of things and, and not give the design, uh, adequate time? That's the first question.
So I, I took over the project, um, the previous planner was, uh, Eliana Hassan. And so in looking at the project history, she did conduct, I believe, four different incompleteness reviews. So there was significant discussion, um, in regards to design and in regards to incompleteness. The process was somewhat bifurcated because the planners were managing incompleteness and technical compliance regarding the zoning requirements and also design. Well, um, separately, uh, the historians were working on the project. So, uh, working on their reports for historic resource evaluation on the peer review. So there was no kind of crossing or interference with the staff's review of that. And, and when I took it over, uh, I had seen that there had been quite a bit of work done on the part of, of Eli Hassan to, to manage this.
Okay, well, I would still question that, and maybe it had to do with, uh, the changing of the guard. Uh, second part of my question goes on to the next sentence or so, which talks about the, the plate heights. These are pretty, and I'm, I'm going to have Michael talk about this at some point. These are pretty, pretty big plate heights for this house, both, both on the first and the second story. What did, what did staff think about that as far, as far as the application goes?
So it's, it's my understanding that staff had taken the position that, um, following the, the design standards, that there are multiple tools that could be utilized to reduce overall bulk. And those were described in the report and described in the presentation. Yeah, if, if, if the commission believes that, that, that the overall scale of the design in regards to plate heights, or window sizes are an issue of concern, um, then the commission could, could, could potentially, uh, provide direction in regards to those issues if, if, if.
I think we'll get to that. My question was more around what the city thought of that. We, we don't normally see drawings that come in front of us with plate heights of this, uh, this nature. So, okay. So thanks, Sean, on that. We'll, we'll get to that a little later, uh, in the, in the meeting. So with that, I guess that concludes our questions of, uh, of the city, uh, as far as the presentation. So next, what we would like to do, uh, is the owner or the architect present that they have a presentation they want to share with everyone?
Yes, your chair bishop there here.
Chair bishop, if I may, I have an answer for Commissioner Blockus's question, if it's not been forwarded.
Why don't you, you hold it till later. Let's, let's, let's deal with that a little further down the line.
Thank you, Chair.
I, I have a question on that as well when we get there. Okay. So, uh, we know, if you could, I guess, uh, ask the owner or the architect to, uh, move forward with their presentation, please?
Yeah, I believe Alessandra is from the architecture firm and then Hetal is the property owner. So you guys have ten minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you in advance for your time. Dushant and I bought our home on forty-one Marvin Ave in twenty seventeen. After checking multiple times with the city, that the home we were planning to buy was not historic. Our MLS sheet said home is not historic and can be torn down, a fact that was validated by city historic service. Halfway through getting our plans approved, Mr. Bear complained to the city that the home may be historic. Out of love for our city and, and respect for our neighbors and the due process for the city, we agreed to review the, like, with licensed historians chosen and contracted by the city, and we paid for not one but multiple historic evaluations. In, it is August twenty twenty-one, we've been waiting patiently for two-plus years for the city to complete their due process. Our patience stems mainly from our goal to ensure that our neighbors and our city knows that we mean it when we say we want to be good neighbors. We understand that the current home has been here for a long time and is well-loved. We respect and love our neighbors and their right to renovate and build a home of their choice. With our diverse character neighborhood, as per city, cities' design guidelines in mind, we chose a home that used elements from many homes in our surroundings. Our goal is to build a very simple, elegant, high-quality home that is of its time, will look like it belongs here hundred years from now, and everyone who views it will admire it for its simplicity and feeling of belonging. Many neighbors that have driven by or walked past have given comments of support for our new design. Of the twenty-plus letters that have been sent of support, eleven-plus letters are from folks who live on Marvin Ave. I will now pass it on to my architect team to describe our approach in detail.
Thank you, Hadal. Uh, this is actually Eugene Sakai from Studio S Squared Architecture. Um, our firm has had the privilege of presenting projects to this commission many times over the years, and I want to thank you for your time again, uh, tonight. A primary consideration for our design of any new Los Altos home is how to minimize impact to the neighbors. Though our proposal tonight for a new home is of a contemporary style, it is of a similar square footage on both levels as seen on this slide, and similar ridge height to the existing. Our proposed maximum height is over six feet lower than the existing as well. The existing home is surrounded by trees, as you've seen by having visited the site, which filter the views of the home from the street, and this will not change with our new design. Our proposed footprint largely overlaps with the existing, which allows us to retain nearly all healthy screening trees. We are also correcting non-compliant building setbacks and daylight plane encroachments, as I will show you. Our new design also improves on second-floor setbacks, moving second-floor bulk and mass away from our immediate neighbors. We are retaining the existing brick labyrinth, which is a beloved feature of this neighborhood, as well as the existing landscape and hardscape along both street frontages, which are just as character-defining as the existing home, if not more so. The existing home has had multiple additions and renovations over the years, which have both increased bulk and mass and brought the home out of compliance with zoning regulations. Our proposal remedies these non-conformities, creating a completely code-compliant home while proposing a structure of similar scale to the existing. The most recent of these additions brought the entire east side of the house out of compliance with a daylight plane, most noticeably with a solar chimney that is four and a half feet over the maximum height limit. Here, I'm going to spend a little bit talking about the neighborhood context. As noted by staff, a diverse-character neighborhood is characterized by many different building forms and styles. Forty-one Marvin is in a diverse-character neighborhood. In fact, page ten of the Los Altos residential design guidelines looks very similar to Marvin Avenue with a mix of home styles, both single and two-story, and many different styles ranging from ranch, bungalow, Spanish, and one could presume is contemporary as well. In these diverse neighborhoods, the design guidelines call for, quote, "each design to have its own design integrity." And nowhere does it prescribe that a new home must mimic its neighbors or replicate the style of an existing home that it is replacing. The RDG is essentially silent or agnostic on the question of style in a diverse-character neighborhood. The design guidelines do recommend mitigation for bulk and size, which our design already does by replacing a house that does not comply with setbacks, daylight plane, or height limit with one that is fully compliant, as I have pointed out. These are some photos of the Marvin Avenue neighborhood with our parcel shown in the middle photo. So there are some nearby neighbors which are much more massive and bulky than our proposed design. These two homes present a very boxy and vertical appearance, as you can see, with large roof forms atop unbroken two-story walls. In fact, twenty-one Marvin is our immediate neighbor adjacent to the north. On our block face, there are existing single-story homes demonstrating a highly visible tall entry feature. These entry feature heights are comparable and in fact taller than our proposed main entry at forty-one Marvin. Different roofing materials, colors, shapes, and sizes give this neighborhood the lovely custom home feel that signify a diverse-character neighborhood. There are also nearby examples of standing seam metal roofs on two-story homes in the immediate neighborhood. Our darker color roof and wall palette will recede into the trees much more than the current white painted two-story home on site. This stately contemporary-style, Spanish-style home and this charming two-story English country cottage both add to the rich diversity of the immediate neighborhood. And since we are proposing a new home, we feel that the design should be of its time and not create, create a false sense of historicism. We view our design as a contemporary interpretation of the Los Altos ranch style, as seen in the two photos above of classic ranch-style homes nearby. Simple roof lines, horizontal emphasis, earth tones. This style is a mid-century modern style, having reached its peak popularity post-World War II with clean lines and simple forms developed in large part as a reaction to overly ornate traditional styles. Our north neighbor at twenty-one Marvin is a Spanish colonial style with a two-story entry element. Our proposal has a similar maximum height, but our second floor steps twelve and a half feet back from the first floor for a total setback of thirty-two and a half feet from Marvin Avenue. This approach creates a much less massive appearance from the street than our neighbor, which is further assisted by our retaining the existing mature oak trees in front of the house. Like the existing home, the elevation of our design faces south towards the east-west section of Marvin. Here, our design offers a thirty-nine-foot setback to the face of building where twenty-five feet is required, as well as retaining the existing landscape frontage. As you can see from this image, the form of our design avoids tall two-story walls and vertically-aligned windows, creating a horizontal emphasis right out of the design guidelines. The darker material palette and the wood-clad second floor will blend in, not stand out from the existing surrounding trees. I touch on privacy here for a few slides. As you know, privacy is a two-way street, works for the benefit of both the homeowner and the neighbors. Walking around this property, the one thing you'll notice is that there's just a, a really expansive, extensive tree canopy, which will largely remain. Our office created these views, photo sims, if you will, from the second-story balcony showing existing houses across the street and to our left and right in red. As you can see, they're highly shaded or, or screened by these trees. You can't even see them. A photo of the street view. And then I think most compellingly, a video that our client took simulating the view from that same balcony. As you can see, trees all around. You really can't even see the neighboring houses. Pretty much as if you're in a forest. I wanted to close by talking about the residential guidelines themselves. Essentially, our firm takes great pains to, uh, to think about the guidelines with every two-story home we propose. We, we look very closely at section five point four. We use this as a checklist in many ways. We check off boxes as we go. Uh, many of these things can be seen in our design, such as the emphasis on the horizontal. Basically, breaking up second-floor two-story wall heights, low-pit roofs. These are straight out of the design guidelines and incorporated into our design. I wanted to point out that we, that we agree with the passion of the neighbors and respect their, their points of view, that we also feel that our clients have rights, particularly given the process that they've been through and the effort that they put into proposing a design that is both sensitive to the neighborhood, compliant with, uh, the zoning and the design regulations, and one in which we feel that you should consider very strongly for approval here tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm here for questions, as are my clients and our arborists. Thank you again.
Okay, uh, thanks for the presentation. So, uh, with that, back to the, uh, back to the commissioners, uh, any questions, uh, for the owner or for the, or for the architect? So, uh, Sam, have you?
Yeah, um, Gene, the, uh, was there ever a consideration of, uh, trying to mimic or somehow bring, bring into the new design some of the characteristics of the old design?
Meaning, meaning sort of the, the sort of the colonial style that's there now?
Well, at least maybe some token things that would relate the significance of the old structure to the new and, and be something that the neighborhood would feel, um, listen to.
Well, um, when we surveyed the neighborhood, um, as, as I tried to touch on, you know, what we saw was really that the, that the neighborhood is extremely diverse. There's, there's a mix of styles. There's really no one cohesive style here, but the one that we took the most inspiration from was, as I mentioned, the, the ranch homes, um, which are more recent and vintage, that don't look back to traditional styles that are actually modern and contemporary in their thinking and have a lot of elements that we've incorporated, such as the horizontal emphasis, sort of an organic material palette, um, clean roof lines. Uh, so yes, I, I would say that we did actually look at our context, um, but really the, the ranch context more so than the Spanish or the English cottage that, that I mentioned earlier. I think I would also point out that, um, in terms of blending in, um, our material palette is considerably darker and more organic than the existing clapboard white siding. And so from that standpoint, we also felt that that more organic, darker material palette will actually blend in to the neighborhood, uh, much as a cabin might blend into the woods.
Okay, Sam, any, anything else for the owner or the architect?
No.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Okay, um, yeah, I have a few questions for the architect.
Michael.
First, um, I, I'm more concerned and question about the plate height. So let's start with the existing garage. I understand it's existing garage. Are we, are you raising the, uh, the plate height of the existing garage?
No, we are not.
Everything is the same?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and then let's go, um, talk about the, um, the proposed house, the two-story house. I understand you put some sections and showed the interior height and everything. Can you give, give me a more, um, additional information? I'm trying to see, because I understand the, the roof form changes and sometime it's, it's lower and it's higher. So can you give me some kind of overall view on the plate height for the ground floor and then the second floor? As well as the, uh, entry, uh, porch that plate height?
Okay, um, let me, let me attempt to tackle that question. And pardon me for, um, scrolling through my drawings here. So, um, there are, there are a variety of plate heights. There's a, there's a single-story portion of the house, basically facing west, you know, where the front door is. And I think that's where you're, you're picking up on the ten-foot-nine plate height, which really only occurs at one condition, which is just the left of the front door, right here. So I think that answers one of your questions.
Well, by the general ground floor plate height, is that nice six?
Yes, actually, let, let me get to that. Um, so on the sections, you can see more. You can see more typically what the two-story section looks like. So where we're below the second floor, The typical plate height is nine foot six. And the second floor plate height is eight feet. Now, there are vaulted ceilings throughout the second floor that, you know, would sort of spring up from that eight-foot starting point. But, you know, I think we should correct for the record that the typical plate height for this house is actually 9.5 at the ground floor. And eight feet at the two-story sections of the home. There are some single-story sections that have taller plate heights, but those are not typical, as I pointed out.
Okay, okay. All right, got it, all right.
Yeah, this 11-foot 6 plate height, for example, just sorry to interrupt, but that is not a typical plate height. That is at the vaulted portion of the master bedroom.
Okay. All right, thank you Eugene.
My pleasure, Michael.
Thanks, Michael. David, any questions for the owner or the architect?
Yeah, just follow up on Michael's point. Eugene, what would you say is the average plate height for the first floor? Sort of straight, you know, it goes from 10.3 to 10.9. You know, on the exterior from, you know, the front left to the front right. So kind of, you know, you have here is a 9.6 sort of the average on the first floor. And again, what would that be on the second floor?
Sure. Let's see if I can find an appropriate view to clarify. Let me go to my roof plan here. So you can see that this is a plan which superimposes the second floor Above the larger first floor. And so it is only in those single-story sections outside the second floor Footprint, where we have those plate heights that exceed 10 feet. So for example, right here in these two front room, two areas between gridline six and eight. So below gridline six to eight, those would be the areas that have the 10-foot plus plate heights. Everything else in the two-story section, as I pointed out to Michael, Has a 9.5 first floor, 9.5-foot first floor and an eight-foot plate height on the second floor. I hope that clarifies that.
Yes, it does. And then secondly, the deck. Frankly, that is a massive deck. Nothing we have ever approved in the past. Can you give me a little history of how that came about and what the thinking was? And why was it not put back at sort of the more passive four or five-foot depth range?
Thank you for that question, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this. So the, we've done, we've done a ton of projects in Los Altos. And we know all too well the difficulty of getting the second floor balconies approved. And we discussed this with our clients at the outset of the project. However, as we came to understand the nature of their site And kind of the context in much more detail. We realized that this was probably one of the rare opportunities in which One could really in good faith propose a large balcony of this sort. Because of the privacy that I pointed out in that video that I flashed in front of you all. Normally, We would never propose something this large, even though it is very far setback from From people's yards, but given the existing tree canopies And the fact that this balcony has no line of sight, but towards this public street in two directions. That in conjunction with the existing tree canopy Made us realize that this was an opportunity to propose something Different than the norm, because the site is different than the norm. And so the balcony, as it were, started out as basically a patio cover For the south-facing patio, which I think is a normal part of most homes, but We then realized that there really was no privacy impact being created if we were to turn that patio cover into A balcony, because we're looking out onto the street and on the one interior lot line, it's completely screened by 20-foot tall Existing very healthy hedge row, which I depicted in the video. So really, it was that, it was just the fact that we didn't see this balcony as having any impact to anyone.
Okay, well, And I don't know quite how to say this, but I think the video is kind of deceptive. In the effect that three or four of the trees that you kind of see won't be there. So the big oak or the large redwood, which is kind of where the deck would be. There's a crape myrtle or some other tree kind of there. The tree, the oak next to the garage, which I think probably was the original reason why there was a A setback difference, because that might have been a smaller tree, you know, prior to these owners back in the 80s when that garage was built. You know, when I would spend, you know, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes walking around, looking different angles and that type of thing. And there is a large Area on the corner of the lot, basically if you work from each side property, You go probably, and I didn't walk it off, maybe 15 feet each way. It's fairly well screened. Then you go from that point around the corner to the other side. It's about where the garage is and Once you hit the garage, that front tree there, it's kind of screened there. So the whole center portion, which really I think is what maybe some of the neighbors are talking about. Is the focal point of that lot is wide open. And you'll look right into there and the first thing that caught my eye was the deck. Wasn't the siding, it wasn't the fenestration of windows and all that, it was the deck. So I think you might want to take another look at that or, you know, like this picture that you have here, that redwood tree is not going to be there.
Correct, and that is the one tree that is providing some line of sight coverage To neighbors, but as you can see beyond that tree, There really is limited to no visibility of the house beyond, because of trees on the other side of the street. So I do understand your concern, but it's something that we studied very carefully. None of the other trees that you talked about us taking out are in fact coming out. So I, you know, apart from that one redwood tree, which is really Right up against the proposed house, you know, this foliage is to remain.
Okay. That is all the questions I have.
Thank you, David.
Okay, okay, thank you, David. So To the architect, Back on the deck, which I agree is considerably too large for what we're trying to accomplish here. What did you calculate the square footage of the deck? And then we'll compare that to what Sean's kind of holding back, so how big is this deck?
It's 280 square feet.
That's pretty big, okay. Thanks, that's all I really needed to know on that. So I think that concludes our questions for the owner and for the architect.
Chair Bishop, can I ask one more question?
Who's speaking?
Dave, Commissioner Blockus.
Yeah, David, go ahead, please, yes.
What sort of lighting do we have on that deck for the exterior lighting? Whether playing, you know, you may not have it up to this point, or what sort of plan for that Space?
I think as Sean mentioned, Los Altos does not require a lighting plan submittal, although I suspect that may be changing soon. But to answer your question, what we're showing is actually very minimal. We are actually not showing any lighting on the deck currently. And any exterior lighting is dark sky compliant. Those are because of these little fixtures here. We might, we might add a couple of dark sky compliant fixtures on this wall, maybe three. But it certainly would not be lit up like a lantern at night.
And then any special treatment for the windows or anything that would minimize light from interior Going to the exterior? I don't know if there is such a thing, but.
You mean such as window shades or?
Just in general to, you know, you've got two, four, six, eight. Well, six windows, a slider And a open door that looked to be all glass. If you've got, you know, with the high ceilings and all that, you're going to have higher lights. Are all the upper windows going to be shaded so no light goes out? Because you're going to have light penetration into the Area as well.
Yeah, my client is going to have shades pretty much throughout the south-facing elevation, both for privacy and sun control.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, David. Any other questions from the commission before we move forward? Okay, hearing none, thank you all. The next section, we'll move to having the public comment on the project. And Guido, how many people do we have, do you think, that will speak tonight?
We have one, Two, three, Four, five, six, seven, Eight, Nine, 10, possibly 11, so.
Okay, all right, all right, so to move this project along here this evening, We're going to limit the time to two minutes for each one of the speakers. And Guido, if you would try to maintain the clock on this and As you get your opportunity to speak, please state your name and address. And with that, I'll leave it to Guido to try to organize it in a fashion that we can get every one of the 10 or 11 people in to speak. Guido?
Right, sounds good.
Thank you.
First up is B H E R E R here. Did you want to speak on this item, sir? B S H E R E R. Okay, moving on.
That's me.
Oh, did you want to speak, sir?
Um, I can say a couple of words, I wasn't planning on it, I didn't realize you called me, but I've been listening. It's a complicated topic. The architect says that, you know, it fits in the daylight plane. We really shouldn't be focusing on design, because I guess that's an artistic impression. I live across the street from the, I'm 24 Marvin Avenue, Brian Shearer, sorry. And I'm just disappointed in the design, it's I like modern design, I like things that are pleasing aesthetically. And unfortunately, I just can't say that this project fits into those categories for me. It's dark, it's large, I guess the darkness, the architect says makes it fit in, I'm not sure I agree with that. The bulk and the mass is relatively large. It's a design style that I'm searching to understand. There's a lot of windows at sort of various places, and a number of materials on the building that I guess are okay, I'd have to see them, but All in all, I guess if you were going to build a house like that, I am just struggling to figure out why you would pick a location like that. Of other pieces of land out there. That's all I have to say at the time.
Thank you. Next up is William Somers, are you there, sir? Go ahead, you have two minutes.
This is Jeff Somers, I live at 50 Marvin, for the last 20 years. And in the Mountain View, Los Altos area, for more than 30 at this point. And I've looked at the plans of the house and I submit support approving it. I like it, but you know, I don't think that's particularly relevant. There's houses in Los Altos that I don't like, and I don't think that's relevant either. There's also yards in the neighborhood that are severely overgrown and have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And I think that's actually a bigger deal than any of these designs. I think these guys should be able to build the house they want, so long as it fits with the character in the neighborhood. And there are plenty of modern houses like this in the neighborhood. And I guess there's thousands of every size and style in Marvin, and that's what makes Marvin one of the very best streets in Los Altos. And then finally, I guess, you know, the city's facing a lot of budget pressures in the coming years. I just heard the city manager speak. And we need to get to a place where routine projects like this one are treated just like that, routine. We need to get to the point where we focus the city's scarce resources on hard problems. Just not having more delays, added cost, and avoid the prospect of litigation where we have significant litigation costs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Did your, is it Sarah Summers, did Sarah want to speak on the item?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Sarah Summers and I live at 250 Marvin Avenue. And I've been here for 23 years. I've reviewed the designs of the new house and I think it's going to be beautiful. And I welcome the addition of this design to our neighborhood. The very first time I came to Marvin Avenue, I was looking for a house myself. And I was really impressed with the range of architectural styles. It made me want to live on Marvin Avenue. Every house is different, but it comprises a very highly desirable neighborhood. On the portion of Marvin I live on, we've had six new houses out of nine houses That are near me, and the styles are very diverse, they're all different, Italian, modern, craftsman, Napa style. And that all blends in with the original houses that are there and remodeled houses. So for the last couple of years, this house where the property is Has really been unfairly called a historical house. And the process of unproving this has required the homeowners to spend a lot of money And to have excessive delays on their project. So if there was any way to fast-track this house, I think it should be done. Continuing to delay the new home feels prejudicial. I highly support the new design at 41 Marvin Avenue, and I hope that the council approves it tonight. Thank you.
Next up would be Emily, Emily, did you want to speak on this item?
No, I don't.
Okay, so just sit tight. And then Harithus. I'm sorry, I apologize if I'm messing up your name.
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, no problem. And Jess, did you want to speak on this item?
No, I don't, thanks.
Okay. And John and Gail?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, go ahead, you have two minutes, ma'am.
I just want to mention, I'm Gail Dilly, I'm at 44, I'm directly across the street. And I will be looking at that deck from my front door. When that redwood tree is out, there'll be a very clear view of that deck to me and to everyone who's walking down the street. There's also a, I wanted to mention that there is Seven trees that are slated for removal on that lot. One tree is indicated in their landscaping plans. There's also a 34-inch diameter live oak that they show in that video. That's hiding the deck from the front of the house. That is indicated by the arborist to be diseased or unhealthy. I've seen branches fall off it and I see pieces of bark missing. I think that tree is going to be gone within the next year. So I would suggest that something be done For whatever sized deck they put up there to for whatever sized deck they put up there to, to um help to mitigate the view from the front. And um I moved into this house. I had always lived across the street from the ugliest house in the neighborhood, and I pinched myself. I had the most beautiful view. And there's a picket fence there. There's squirrels running around on the trees and, and um and a historic old house that, that is gonna be sorely missed. Thank you.
Okay. And uh John Bear, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I would. So I'm John Bear. I live at 55 Pepper Drive, the original estate home for the 30 acres which, of which this house is a part. When we moved here, we were told that um 41 Marvin was the foreman's home, and it was built in 1905. And that's what the assessors office states. Um, and to date, no one, despite two quote experts, have been able to ascertain the date that that house was built. So if it's built before 1907, it will join the list of approximately seven houses that were built and still in existence um prior to the founding of the city. I spent nine years on the planning commission. We used to do design review. I approved a number of houses on the private end of Marvin Avenue. And when we approved those projects, we considered that to be a very different street and a different neighborhood than the rest of Marvin Avenue. So all I appreciate the comments from some of the neighbors who live up that end of Marvin, it really isn't relevant here. Context matters. I stand by the comments I forward to you about um the compatibility of this house with the design review guidelines. It is an abrupt change, as a number of commissioners has said. Comparing this to 21 Marvin Avenue, that house would never be allowed to be built today. There are four neighbors directly across from this house who have sent letters opposing it. Um, and I think those should be considered um more strongly than people who live further away, or frankly, who live in a different city. I would encourage you not to approve this design. I hope the homeowners get to build this house, just not in my neighborhood and not in my town. It, it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. It frankly doesn't fit the town. Um, it belongs somewhere else. Thank you very much.
Uh, next up would be um Mikel Burner or Mike, Michael, is it Michael Burner?
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, thank you. I, I moved into the neighborhood in 2008. I raised uh four girls. We, in 2008, we used to walk past that lot. We've walked past that lot year after year after year. We, we built a house on 132 Hawthorne Avenue, which has a much larger deck than the deck that's being proposed here. Um, and I love that neighborhood. Uh, that is a very special lot, uh, and it deserves a special house. Um, I, I think this house is extraordinary. I'm also very concerned. I have heard from Hadal, who have I worked, who I've worked with uh now for over 15 years, that um she has been told to leave the neighborhood uh by people uh on this call, and that she has no place in the neighborhood. Uh, I, I'm outraged by that. This is a gorgeous home. Uh, I think the neighborhood is lucky to have it. Thank you.
Okay. And next up is, and they didn't identify the name, so it's a phone number 650 948-9350. Did you wanna speak? Once again, 650 948-9350. Okay. Next up, uh, it says call in user two. Did you wanna speak on this item? Okay, and let me just double check chair that I haven't missed anybody. Um, I believe I'm double checking.
This is Jen Paulson. I'm not sure what, if I'm call you there too.
Um, you are identified. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and speak, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jen Paulson. I was born and raised in Los Altos, and I have been a Los Altos homeowner for the last 22 years. I'm a local realtor, and I worked in Los Altos residential custom home construction with my father for over 15 years. I've helped design and build many homes in Los Altos, and I have seen the new design of this home being proposed on 41 Marvin. And I absolutely love the architectural integrity of the home and how well it fits into the unique lot and the current landscape of this lot with the beautiful oak trees and the one-of-a-kind brick maze that is currently in the front yard of this home. The way the new home is designed in front with the artistic windows is going to complement and beautifully reflect the trees and blend into this lot and landscaping. It is a very cohesive design. I particularly love the way the home is going to look from the corner of the lot. The different windows break up the height of the two-story home. The choice of window placement and the design is very respectful of the privacy of the neighbors. The roof and the choice of organic materials makes the home feel very custom. The corner lot with mature trees provides a unique setting with lots of privacy for this house. There are many homes in the neighborhood with metal roofs and contemporary architecture, and I believe as the city staff has characterized this project, it is appropriate and consistent with the neighborhood. Overall, this home is going to add to the net value of the neighborhood, and I recommend the design review commission to approve this home's proposed design. Thank you so much for taking my comments.
Okay, Chair Bishop, this is Guido. I believe everybody's had a chance to speak, but we do have quite a few, so if I miss somebody, please go ahead. Okay, I believe we're good. Chair Bishop?
Alright, Guido. Thank you very much uh for that. So we'll close the public comments uh section of tonight's meeting, and we'll move into the commission discussion between the commissioners. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe the rules allow rebuttal from the applicant at my.
Oh, sorry, Chair Bishop. This is our deputy city attorney, Eric. Um, so sorry, I didn't introduce him beforehand. Chair Bishop?
Uh, sure. If you'd like to do that, before we close the public comments, is there any rebuttal?
Uh, Eugene Sakai here. I think both, both I and my client would like to kind of split the rebuttal time. I, I'll let her go first.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Sure.
I am very sorry that uh Mr. John Bear has repeatedly since two years ago, since the day I bought this house, has repeatedly come to my house and told me to leave this neighborhood. He has repeatedly said, people like you are not welcome in my neighborhood. I have no idea why he keeps saying that. He said that again today, and it hurts me deeply. I thank everyone who spoke today and for the love and comments that my neighbors and my city residents have provided. We are extremely grateful for their time and all this energy that has been spent on this project. We have been waiting patiently for two-plus years for due city process, and you can ask the city officials, we've nothing, we've been nothing but model city citizens. We've shown how much we care by taking um as much care we can for our neighbors' privacy. We've kept the footprint of our current home. We could have grown it to all the required setbacks, but we have not. We've reduced the mass and bulk by reducing the height of our house. It's almost the same height as 21 Marvin, which is what is our next-door neighbor. And we've brought the home into compliance of the city's rules and regulations. So the only correction I would like to make is that the historians that we paid for and the city hired independent of us have discovered that this house was not built in 1905, but 1920. So I would just like to make sure that that is on the record.
I um, I wanted to just add on a couple of things, Hadal, and uh you know, I, I'm also, you know, nervous about how this is gonna turn out, nervous for you, nervous for, for you kind of, just the process in general, because, you know, I, I've done a lot of projects in Los Altos. I've been in many public hearings throughout the Bay Area, but uh I haven't really seen um sort of anti, antineighbor sentiment like this where um, you know, neighbors are coming out and basically telling you to, quote, "pick a different location" or "don't build in my neighborhood or town." Um, I, you know, I, I, quite frankly, it scares me to think where that is coming from, and it's very disheartening to hear that as a, as someone who, you know, is, is a longtime resident of the Bay Area. Um, you know, there was one speaker, uh, Mr. Shearer, who, who attested that I said, "Don't think about the design." Um, I, I never said that. I, I said that based on the residential design guidelines, that in a diverse-character neighborhood, that the integrity of a design unto itself is what is important, and that's what the design calls for. I, I didn't say, "Don't, don't think about the design," so that I, and I, I resent that characterization. John and Gail and Mr. Bear, who, who continue to put their own non-expert opinion over that of the city's objective experts who were hired independent of, of, of my client and, and chosen for their expertise and their, their statements that this house is historic, repeating that over and over, uh, both in writing and here tonight. I appreciate your opinion, but it is, it is an incorrect one, as validated by, by these two experts. Uh, one put forth, and then another one peer-reviewed. No faults were found in either report. And so, um, you know, I, I sincerely hope that this commission here tonight will uh, will consider due process, will consider what is right, what is legal, and what is on the books in terms of city law ordinance and guidelines and, and judge this project accordingly. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank, thank you very much. Uh, Guido, is there any other speakers on the rebuttal side?
Uh, the, no, the, the way the rebuttal is, is, it's purely for the applicant, according to the commissioner.
Okay, fine, then, then we can move forward, right?
So Mr. Chair, you're closing the public hearing now, correct?
I'm going to close the public comment section now, yes. That's okay.
Yeah.
With that, yes, let's move on to the.
Chair Bishop, Deputy City Attorney Eric, did you, did you wanna say something? It sounded like you wanted to say something.
No, I was just clarifying that we were closing the public hearing.
So we're, yes, we've closed that, so thank, thank you for pointing that out to us as well. Uh, so on to the next section, which is the discussion amongst the commissioners, uh, based on what we've heard here tonight. Why don't we, why don't we go from the bottom up? So David, why, why don't you uh kick this off for us?
Okay, uh, give me a second while I grab my notes here. Um, so this is a, a pretty detailed package, probably the biggest one I've seen. A lot of community input, some good, some bad, some indifferent. Um, I think I need to start with the apparent facts that this is not a historic property. It hasn't been a historic property in any of the registries or anything. It doesn't meet the criteria as established by a couple of professionals, peer-reviewed, et cetera. So um, I think that can be set to rest. Now, what we look at is the actual design. Does it fit the neighborhood? So it's a diverse neighborhood with many different styles, sizes, single-story, two-story, modern, eclectic, you know, a whole variety of different, different properties. This particular one, um, when you heard to its original property, is actually smaller in heightened bulk uh from, from the front looking. I think with penetration with the windows and all that, it kind of fits in there. Um, I had some concerns about the uh plate heights, but when it was described to me, it kind of made sense, and to drop those down by half of, half of a foot or whatnot is still not gonna make any substantial difference, given that the, the property itself is gonna be proposed at 25 feet. The city allows 27 feet, so it's kind of well within that uh boundary. However, I do have one big concern, and that is with that front deck. I do not feel it fits in with the neighborhood. I don't feel um that, I mean, there are some privacy issues with that, but I think it's also look and feel with that. Um, so that's where my approval would end. I would fully support the project as it is with a reduction in the uh upper patio to more of a um passive, you know, four or five feet deep by, you know, you can run the length of, of 28 feet or whatever it is, which would basically cut the deck in, in uh, almost by a third and a half from 285 to about 100 square feet. Um, if that was done, I would fully support it and sign it off today, but it needs to go on. So um, I like the house. It is a modern house, but I think it's a modern house that will fit in with the variety of all the other houses that are there. Um, I do find it disturbing that this is now the second project that I've been on in my brief second term here, where neighbor uh disagreement has gotten so intense. The first one that we had was uh, you know, a while back, and that homeowner actually was so disturbed by it, they sold the property and moved. And I think that's absolutely horrible. That being said, um, I support the project excluding the patio deck. That's my comments.
Alright, uh, thanks David. I agree with you, by the way. Uh, Michael, thoughts?
Okay, yeah. Um, I agreed um with uh David to some certain extent. You know, I feel, I feel sorry for the, the homeowner, I have to go through uh um, the, the process and, and facing the, all this uh issues. Um, so, but, but at the other hand, that uh we still have to do our due diligence and work. So um, you know, the historical, I, I agree with the um commissioner blockers that we have already two uh well-known, experienced um historical architect or historian looking at the, the existing house, so it's not a a historical, that's, so that's, we, we can just throw that uh, the, the issue of historical out of the picture. So let's move on to the um the design. You know, as far as the design, I, I personally, I just like, you know, most of people, I encourage diversity. Whether it's modern, traditional, you know, different character. However, I, I find that um, I try to, I spend a lot of time, I mean, more than audit a project on this one. I'll try to study the neighbors, the reading through all the neighbors' comments and see where they come from. So first, I'll, from the neighbor, I, I weigh a lot more, I, I, I look into the um and weigh a lot more on those adjacent neighbors' comments rather than the people live further away, a few blocks away, or even from the other side of the town. So it's adjacent neighbors' comments make most uh important to me. And um, I found out um the, the surroundings about half and half. So there's definitely some issue to look into it. And uh, I wanna encourage the owner, you know, that, uh, don't be frustrated by the process. I think we are getting there. And as I said before, you're gonna live in this house, you're gonna be, be uh, the, the good neighbors, you know, in this neighborhood. So just spend another, you know, couple months, I don't, it's been for maybe two years. So just spend a little bit more effort and then um see if we can get this through for you. I found the most um the problem is the um, I mean, the design, I don't have a, I mean, the, the modern design, I don't have a problem. I, I actually like the, the way the architect use of mix of materials, different material and make the the color, the exterior color more natural tone and darker. Uh, try to fit into the um, you know, the, the woods and the, the natural environment. However, consider this is the corner lot. There's some exposure, you know, to the, to the street and to the neighbor. So I, I believe it's a combination of the um the design area such as the um, the massing, the visual impact created by the combination of the massing, the plate height, the deck, and then. The play height, the deck, and then the roof over the deck. I think that's where the, the issue is that that's create a visual impact that's more than. Normal. So when you look at from the front, from the corner, from the south side. This is a two, exposed to two side of the street. So that's where the visual impact is coming from. The large area of the windows. And I know Commissioner Blockus asking about the balcony and then, you know, I'm a chair asking about. Chair Bishop asking about the area of the balcony, the deck. And then not to mention that I know there's some design, it's not in detail yet. You know, the lights on the outside in maybe this even, are they gonna be lights, downlights from the. The roof underside, the roof sofa, you know, overhand above the balcony. Those cannot be visible and impact the, the surrounding. So overall, I mean, I want to mention another one. If you look at the west elevation, that's a street side elevation. The, the existing garage with the eight or nine foot play height compared to the main house. Then you see the scale of the, the facade compared to the existing garage. It's, it's, it's very different. So, you know, if the architect. Can look into further to mitigate all this issue. About the scale, the play height, the massing, the deck, and then the protruding roof. Over the deck. I, I think, you know, even though I know that Eugene, the architect saying. The area, the height be much similar comparable to the existing. However, I think some of the neighbors concern is the less roof surface, less area of the roof. Surface and more exposed wall surface, that's creating this visual impact. So if the architect can come up with something that's can mitigate all, all this. Elements I mentioned, I think this is gonna be a good improvements. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, yeah, thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I agree with all of the comments earlier and I want to apologize to the homeowner for the. The unpleasant situation that took place. That it, we've seen it in other projects and I, I want to apologize as a commissioner. To you for that. That's not, not at all what I would want or anyone would want. So. I am, I am not in favor of this project, as I said earlier. I think it is, is too much of a change and particularly with. No, I would call it consideration of its historic presence. And I understand that it's not a historic. Structure, but it, it is for many of the neighbors. And I think there should be some consideration in a design that uses. Some of those features. In, in the construction and. I know that I asked this question of Gene earlier, that that wasn't a, one of the factors. But I, I think it would be. Something to consider. And in its current form, I, I do not support it.
Commissioner Harding, could you give us an example of what sort of feature you're talking about?
I'm sorry, what?
Could you give us an example, this Dave, Commissioner Blockus?
Uh huh, Dave, yeah.
What sort of features are you talking about? That you are suggesting for the applicant to do? I mean, it's a contemporary home, not a bungalow or older style home. So what's.
Right.
Specifically might, are you suggesting which would make it more satisfactory? For you to pass it?
Well, it would, I mean, the. It would have to be some significant change to have some feature that would be. In line with the existing structure and, and that's what I was kind of asking of Gene earlier was that. Was there any consideration of having some accommodation from the old to the new? That would, would work in the design. So that's what I'm, I'm saying. And I'm not the architect, so I, I don't know. I mean, if the, if the architect had been, been given the direction by the owner. We want this to have some semblance of the old home. In the new home, there may have been a different design.
Okay. David, did you have any other questions to Sam or?
Well, I'm, I'm just confused. I mean, they've spent a couple of years on the design. It's a contemporary home. I, I'm not an architect. You know, this would be a great one for Jude to, to sit in on, but he, you know, he lives too close. But I don't know how you put a 1920s home features on a contemporary home. And it sounds like Sam, you're not exactly sure what those features would be in of itself as well. So I, I, I think we need to. Give the applicant direction as to specifics. For example, I suggested. Let's cut the deck down to a passive. You know, you could chop the overhang that's above. That deck to match it with the size of the actual deck. That would minimize it because I think that the, I like the patio or the, you know, that. The balcony as, as cutting the home in half to giving it a sense of. You know, reduction of, of bulk, but I think just the patio itself is just far too small. So I think we need to come up with more. Direction as to where. The applicant should go depending on how we vote and what, what comes up versus a sort of a generality. Of, of what's going on, but that's just my own opinion and we're here to discuss, you know, what, what we need to. Get to them to get it to work. And it does appear to me that they've done a lot of work on it. But I don't know how you're gonna make an old house or a contemporary home look old to fit in with. This definition of let's make it a historical house. It's not a historical house. It's.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that make it a historical house.
Well, to make it look like a historical house.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that. If the design, if the architect had been given the guideline. Use some features of the home. The old home in the new home, then it would have been, it would have been some application of that. I, I don't know enough about. The, the architecture to say what it should be, a roof line, a gable, a balcony and so forth. I'm just saying that that's, I think, what the neighbors who are the direct neighbors. Who have watched this house over the years that they've lived here. That's what we would like to see some consideration in the new house that they will look at going forward.
You know, let me, let me provide some input. I'm trying to, I'm trying, trying to guess Commissioner Harding's. Where he's coming from. I believe that something like, I'm, I'm just, for example. If this is a more like a characteristic area, makes of, you know, I mean, something, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just kind of. For example, you know, farmhouse, ranch style, people build modern farmhouse style, modern farmhouse. They'll be more comparable. But what I'm saying, trying to say to help. You know, the communication between commissioners that maybe some of the character. I mean, not the traditional, but I, I, because I'm an architect, I, I'd have to work with other cities. Design review reviewer, design reviewer all the time. I, I believe that's when you say comparable or the comparable elements, you can borrow. It's like the roof pitch, you can borrow the roof pitch, try to match the roof pitch because. What I'm seeing here, the roof pitch is pretty shallow with the, all the metal. But, you know, maybe you can, the, the, the design can borrow some of the, the, the neighborhood or the, the house roof pitch. Or the porch, the cover porch, that's a, that's a pretty distinctive elements too. I mean, could be more modern, but it's a porch design, cover porch. You know, more significant cover porch, something like that, use some of the elements. And then, but again, my emphasis, more emphasis on the scale and massing. You know, this from coming from, I'm not sure if that's help on your side, Commissioner Harding.
Well, it, it does. I mean, that's, again, you're an architect. I'm just really basically an observer. And, and trying to take in what, what the neighborhood. Has spoken to and that's, that's what I'm calling a consideration. So Gene has been doing this for a long time. We, we know him well and you know, if, if. The, the guidance was to somehow keep some element or some. Feature of the old house and the new, I bet he would come up with something.
Okay, so. And trying to move, move this forward, I think they did keep the maze out front, which is certainly a feature of the, the property. Very distinctive one. I don't know of another one that looks like that. So I, I think Sam's point is a good one. And I think they've actually tried to do some of that outside of the, outside of the structure. So I want to come back and, and just kind of regroup around where we are and see if we can get this thing moving forward. These people have been waiting for some very lengthy period of, of time here. So. My notes. I think we, we split off the historical component from the design. I think that's been well researched. Money's been spent, time's been taken and all of the documents that this group has reviewed. And remember, we're not the historical commission. This is the design review commission. But we have looked through that and I think we can set that to the side for the purposes of our decision making. So then we're focused on the design of what's been presented to us tonight through the documents. And I started off with the plate heights at the beginning because I do think that brings extra bulk and mass to the project. That's not necessary to actually execute this particular house. I talked a little bit about the deck and I think others have mentioned this too. It's quite large and I will, I will say trees come and trees go. Especially with the drought that we're facing, there could be other trees that, that die on the slot. And yes, people can plant new ones, but they're going to be small. That deck is going to be as big as we build it, when we build it. And I strongly recommend that we consider making the deck smaller. And then bring, the, the roof that's over the deck is the thing that caught my eye as soon as I looked through the plans. It's like, wow. You know, that's, that's pretty big. And it's the visible thing, I believe, to all the neighbors that have had probably the most problems, the close neighbors to the house that will actually have to. To see the deck and the ensuing roof. So I think there's work that we can do in that area as well. I do realize other cities and towns have lighting ordinances and we do not have one. But we have specified before as a group, what, what we would want to have for lighting on the outside of the building. If, if a deck does exist in any way, shape or form on that side that faces the street. So I think, I think the design can be improved, quite honestly. I looked at it at first and I was pretty taken back and then through some discussion. I really felt that we could address this to help. The, the owners achieve their goal of building their, their home actually on this lot. But doing it in a way that it fits better into the neighborhood, it's going to make the, the neighbors happy. Because realize after we're done with whatever decision we make here and a house does get built, these people all have to get along. They're neighbors, right? And who, who wants to live in a neighborhood where people don't talk to you, right? So Sam has always been our advocate of trying to work the neighbors and make sure that we can help. Put together a project that's, that's good for everyone. And I think that we really need to, given some of what we heard tonight, and I was quite embarrassed by some of what we heard tonight. I think we need to try extra hard on this one to actually get this done and to come up with a design. That's agreeable to the architect and the owner, but also to the neighbors. Given some of the points that I brought out with, with my thoughts. So. With, with that, what I'd like to see us do is, is have a discussion. And from that discussion, see if we can't come to some particular. Improvements that we would like to have made to the project, get a motion on the table and actually get it voted tonight. So. With that, I opened it back up to the commissioners to see if we can, we can try to work into that direction.
I'd like to. Try to get everyone to go to A3.06. Which is the east elevation.
Okay.
Which is kind of aside you. It gives you more of the roof and the deck.
Yes.
And so if you look on the right side of the, the second story elevation. You have the roof on that side. It jets out, you know, five little slats or whatever of the roof. What I would suggest. Is on the other side, have the same. Thing coming from the left wall as from the right wall. Move the patio, upstairs patio in to four and a half or five feet, then that would go.
Commissioner Blockus, this is Guido. For the benefit of the audience, I have, I can pull up the site plan. Can you give me the sheet you're looking at?
Yeah, you can either go A3, oh, A3.0A or 0B.
0A, one second, one second. Let me pull it up for the benefit, just so that we have a good discussion with.
Yeah, let's, let's go A3.0A.
Is that the one Commissioner Blockus is right here?
Yeah, that's the west, yeah, west elevation. So the top picture is the west elevation. So that's facing. I don't know what the house numbers are, but. You know, facing the entryway from the little picket fence to the front door, the existing front door. Okay, so if you look at that, primarily the upstairs, if you look at the upper left. The roof, yeah, that roof right there goes from that wall. Out, you know, four or five feet or whatever it is. If we were to take that same depth and go to the. And, and you're gonna have to do some work with the roof and I don't know, but to have it sort of equal out on the other side. To where it goes out, maybe a little bit further to where the, the patio goes. So if you take the fence. Fencing of the patio. So we, yeah, so the, the third post in from the house on the deck. So left, left, one more, yeah, right there. So say that's the depth of the, the patio, which is, you know, I'm guessing that's four or five feet or whatever. So that's where the patio ends and then it runs into the downstairs roof, which is a. It'll jet out a little bit. And that's where the. Grass roof, natural roof is on top of it. But if you make that the patio depth. And maybe go out to the post to the right. And, and that would be the, the depth max of the actual covering roof. You know, so it would go cut that back even maybe a little bit more. Then you've kind of taken the deck out of play, make it a passive, you still have the covering over the deck. So you still have that and it reduces the bulk on the upside of the second story. That to me kind of makes. The west elevation. As well as the. South elevation, I guess. Yeah. Which, you know, is basically the corner side of the street. So going from the, the. So going from the, the west side of the house around the corner to the south side. And that will sort of minimize the height or the bulky area of that, primarily the deck and the roof. So to me, that.
That seems like a pretty good, a pretty good idea. So are you thinking from the, from the roof perspective, David, you balance the
Yeah, you can.
Left and right, yeah?
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the patio itself provides a break in the horizontal or no, the vertical of the, that side of the home. You know, like adjusting roof line or whatever for the single story. So that does provide a break there that makes it less bulky, less massy. You still have a, a deck, but it's a passive more than an active. And then you're able to cut back the roof, which again, also gets back away from the mass and bulk of the, of the, you know, potentially, you know, quasi-top heavy look from the, the roof that goes over the patio.
Okay. Good idea. Michael, you have any thoughts on the, the roof and the deck on that side of the house?
Michael, you're, you're on mute.
Okay, yeah, so, sorry.
There you are, okay, welcome back.
Okay. Yeah, so I believe that, that's a good option that Commissioner Blockus gave. But however, I, from my side, I, I would say that the architect Eugene, he has done so many projects in Los Santos. So he, at this time, he, he probably, he should know what we're talking about, you know, about our concern. So, you know, I, I will probably gonna, you know, in my end, I would just say, you know, consider the Commissioner Blockus option. But you know, he can also, please, you know, modify or revise, modify the design, you know, per his understanding. You know, for that, the reduce, reduce the balcony, the reduce the roof above, the bulk, the massing and everything. You know, he, he probably could come up with other, other good option as well. Yeah.
Correct. Okay, so yeah, I would agree with that. What about, what about the plate height and just the massiveness of the building, Michael? Did you, I know you spoke on it a couple of times. Did you have any particulars on that that you'd like to add to as we, we try to see if we can get a motion put together here?
Yeah, I, I say, you know, nine foot six, I mean, nine foot six, I believe for this neighborhood is a little bit high, especially a corner lot. You know, if we, he could consider bring, you know, about six inch down. And then, you know, of course, the porch can be a little bit higher. I don't know what's exactly dimension where the porch is. Maybe bring the porch, right now, visual difference between the porch roof and then the garage is like four, five feet difference. I think that's, that's where the part of the visual impact. That's why I keep on saying, it's, it's a combination of, of various items on this design. I mean, the modern design is, is not a problem for me, but it is a combination of the different treatments and added up the, the visual impact. And that becomes a, a, you know, problem for some people. Okay, and, and for example, another way, I'm just gonna suggest another way. I mean, I'm, I'm always, always try to be open, but this is just one option you can consider for the architect and owner to consider. You know, to, to mitigate or minimize the balcony in, in combination of reduce the size, cut down the roof overhang. You can also use a combination of some solid wall along with the, the open metal railing. Some, you know, some, one section is a solid wall, continue over and then you become open and then when you turn around, it becomes solid. So there's a visual break as well. And then for the windows, you know, the tall window, I think some of the tall window on the second floor, that's also a visual impact. So, so it, it's a combination of stuff, you know, all the side of you, you have to consider. Yeah.
So Frank, Sam again, yeah. So I'm looking at a picture on the, on attachment D, a picture of the existing, existing house. And the features that, that pop out to me, and I'm not sure what they're called, but the, the windows on the second floor with the peaked roof is, is one feature. The other is the sloping roof that is, is come, it's, it's bent. I'm not sure what the right word for that is. But anyway, in terms of a feature, particularly if you're coming from pepper onto Marvin, that's really what, what you see first. The maze isn't, is, is a great thing, but I think it's pretty new there. And it's hard to, it's hard to see. But the windows on the second floor and the, the slope of the roof are what are distinctive. And so I'm not saying that they should have exactly the same, you know, kind of roof structure. But if there was some, some way to duplicate or make a, make some attempt to have that as a, a feature of the, the roof area, to me, would make a big difference.
Okay, it, it may be difficult with this particular type of home to do either of those. But I think, I think your point is a good one that we can pass on to the architect. If there's any way that they have some thread that they can bring forward from the existing house. And, you know, sometimes it doesn't, it can be a color, it can be a material that's actually used that moves forward. You know, I mentioned the maze as an example, there, there can be simple things actually that bring it forward. But I, I think, you know, the dormers that are on that house or the, or the pitch of the roof that's on that house, I'm not sure will work here. But I think your point of bringing it up is a, it's an interesting one. But I would leave that, I would leave that to the, I would leave that to the architect to see if he could find some way to do that. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, all right, yeah. So I think where, where we are is we can do a couple of things, right? We can, we can approve this with changes and a motion. You know, I hate to use the word continue because I know these people don't want to have it continued. But if we go down that road, then we can see another set of drawings where this really is the first set of drawings that we've seen, even though it's taken two years. We've only been presented with these over the last week or so. You know, if you go down the continuing route to see if they could try to take some of the discussion and ideas we presented tonight to see if they could incorporate it into an improved design that we could, we could look at within, you know, whatever Guido could do to schedule it in the next few weeks, that we could have a second look at this and, and approve it then. So I see a couple of ways we can do this. What are you all thinking out there?
I, I like that idea. I have great faith in, in Gene Sakai to have some creative ideas that could bring the, the history of the, of the property forward. Not duplicating it, but have some features. So I think that's a, that's a great idea.
Okay, Michael, David, what, what do you guys think? You know, continue or try to give a, a list of things to get it done tonight? I guess that's my, my basic question here.
I think we're gonna have to continue because I don't think we have really, I mean, we have, it sounds like plate heights, reduction maybe in plate heights, which might help with the mass and bulk. We have patio and we have roof. And then we have.
I think Michael also mentioned maybe smaller windows on the second story, Michael. Did you mention that?
Yeah, I think the, some, some of the windows are really tall.
They are, I agree with you.
On the second floor.
Right, specifically, yes, right, yeah. You know, one of, one of the other things that Michael did mention, and I, I've been thinking about this, this has gone on tonight, which is the, you know, they had, they're, they're able to keep the garage because it's probably non-conforming or something that they can only modify some of it in some way, shape or form. But that, that is a big standout when you look at this, right? It's kind of the plate height differential between the existing old garage and the new house. And again, I don't know what the architect could do with that, but it's something that maybe it would help make the pieces of the puzzle fit together better if, if they were, they were closer in some way, shape or form in height. I think that's actually a really good idea. I'm not sure how you do that, but I thought that was a good point, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, one of, one of the options is that, you know, I mean, of course, just one option off my head, you can, in between, there's some blank wall, tall wall area, you can create, extend the roof, I mean, extend the porch roof with the lower plate height. So it's kind of transition, you know? I mean, as far as the detail, then you, you, you don't have a sudden jump of from, you know, nine foot two, fourteen feet or something like that. So I mean, yeah, with, I think with all this various items, I, I, I think with Eugene, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty confident he can come up with something and come back really soon, you know, in the next few weeks. And then we can, I think we can discuss and hopefully we can approve at that time. So I, I actually, I actually would like to see come back and so we can make sure it's a good design. I mean, you know, with all this effort, like I was saying, it's like another few weeks, you know, to make a good project, it's always worth it. I mean, we are not talking about months. We're talking about just another few weeks to make it a better, greater project, greater house design.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, given that they've waited two years. If we can, we can help them get this actually done better, I'm all for that. And also make the neighbors feel that we've, we've tried our best and we've listened to what they have to say too, to get their thoughts into the design. And, you know, like I said, they, they all do need to live in the same neighborhood when we're done. So whatever we can do to bring them all together, I think is the right thing for us to do. So I, I'm, I'm for moving this out and continuing it. That would be my thoughts if somebody wanted to try to put a motion together around that tonight. We could, we could conclude on this and then, yes?
Bishop, this is Guido, just, it, it sounds like you're moving towards remanding and back to staff. So I, I wanted to highlight what I heard and if I could get correction from.
No, 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 I was gonna come around to you before.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, no, I wasn't gonna forget you.
Okay.
So go ahead, I mean, now's as good a time as any, if you want to go through the list and
Yeah, so.
See if you caught everything we said, yeah.
What I heard is there's been a lot of concern about the size of the deck. So reducing the size of the deck, reducing the wall plate height in six to twelve inches, trying to find a way to reduce the visual impact of the garage with recognizing that it is non-conforming and they can't really touch more than 50%. So that's something that Eugene Sakai and his team need to, yes. I've heard cutting down on the roof overhang. We've heard that the windows on the second floor need to be reduced. And I've also heard potentially having the roof pitches be better integrated into the neighborhood. So that's what I've heard. If I'm wrong or need correction, please let me know.
Sounds good.
Got most of it. Michael, David?
Yeah, yeah, sounds good to me.
It's fine, yeah.
This is the, this is the deputy city attorney speaking. I, I would recommend that if your motion is to continue, it would be advantageous to identify a date certain for the continued hearing and that your motion be to continue it and provide the direction, the specific direction that Guido listed.
Right, I think, thank, thank you. I think that's what, I would agree with you, that's what we should do. And we meet every two weeks. I don't know if the architect could be ready in that time. And I don't know what Guido has on the calendar, two weeks out. But as soon as possible would be, would be my recommendation on that. So they have been patiently waiting as the owner stated. And I think, like I said, we've only seen this for a very short period of time. So giving us one more look at this, I think is the right thing to do. Guido, where are we on the calendar and when do you think?
So we probably won't make the next meeting because, you know, we need to give Eugene and his team time to prepare. September first or September fifteenth, it probably might be advantageous just to book it for September fifteenth, just to give us time to write the report and show how the applicant has tried to meet the request of the DRC, so.
Okay. That, that sounds good.
Chair Bishop, should, well, Chair Bishop, should we check, or Guido, should we check with the applicant to see if that is a time frame they can make?
Sure, that's fine.
Sure, yeah, so is the, that, thank you, David, is the applicant or architect still on the phone? Would September fifteenth work or a, a second opportunity to present to us?
This is Eugene and yes, that would. However, I was reading through the suggested changes that Guido was reading off or I was listening to. And can you clarify the direction on the garage? Were you asking us to raise the plate height of the garage to bring it closer to the house or lower it? Are we, are we looking to raise or lower the roof line of the garage?
Can I?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Michael.
Chair, can I jump in? And what's, who, the, what's the existing garage plate height right now? Is it from the finished grade? Is it eight foot or nine foot, something like that?
The owners might know, but I believe it's eight feet.
Yeah, you know, I mean. Yeah, if, I understand it's non-conforming, so I'd be, I, I believe the city's rule is if you can, if, if the exterior modification is less than 50%, you still can do it, right? I mean, maybe you can look into raise it by a foot of the plate. You just put the, you know, four by twelve beam all around on the top, above the top plate. So you can raise a foot above, so that'll bring to nine foot plate height. Then that can reach over, I mean, reduce the visual impact between the new and the, the existing, right?
Okay, okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Yeah, so raise was the correct answer, so. Thanks for the question, actually. Good to have that done now. Anything else from the commission? We, to the point, somebody wants to make a motion to continue this to September fifteenth with the outline, outline changes that we provide to Guido?
Yeah, I mean, Guido's got the changes, so.
Yes.
I'm recommending subject property SC one nine dash zero zero one six at forty-one Marvin Avenue to continue to September fifteenth to make the modifications suggested by Design View Commission as documented with Guido.
Okay, so if I could just clarify that the, the motion is to continue until September fifteen to recommend the design changes read by the planning manager subject to the clarification that with respect to the garage, the recommendation was to increase the plate height by approximately one foot. Is that correct?
That is correct. Do you have a second? Sorry.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you. So we'll, we'll read the roll. Sam?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Frank says aye, so unanimous, continued with the points raised. We'll see the project again September fifteenth. Okay, so it's a little after nine, it's been two hours. I suggest we just, we have one more item, we just push on and take the next item. Anybody have a disagreement with that?
No, let's go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right, next on discussion is item six, SC twenty-one zero 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 one four sixty-six Bendu Avenue. So staff, do you have a report for us, please?
Yes, one second, sorry. Okay, good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. The project before is a Designer View application for a first and second story addition to an existing second, two-story house. The project includes eighty-five square feet on the first story, thousand twenty-three square feet on the second story. The subject property is located on the south side of Bendu Avenue between South Clark Avenue and Amador Avenue. The neighborhood along Bendu Avenue in this vicinity is considered consistent character as defined City's Residential Design Guidelines. The homes in the neighborhood are The homes in the neighborhood are a mix of one-story ranch style and two-story single-family homes with lower wall plate heights, simple roof forms, both low pitched gable and hip roofs, rustic materials. Wood siding and stucco are dominant. The structures are, many of the structures are of similar massing and building footprint with uniform patterns of twenty-five to thirty-foot setbacks in the greater neighborhood. There is no uniform street tree pattern, but there are many mature trees on the site and other landscaping in the neighborhood. The parcel is considered a narrow lot, as stated in the, as defined under the zoning ordinance, because it has a sixty-five-foot wide lot, where standard interior lot is eighty feet. And since, and therefore, the project does qualify for a reduced setback. Since the lot is less than seventy feet, an alternative daylight plane is applied, and that is conveyed in the elevation drawings for you. The house is designed to be consistent with the development standards for the R one ten district. The proposed project will demolish the existing first-floor roof form. The entire second story replaced existing first-floor gable and Dutch gable roofs with hip roofs and rebuild the second story with a loft, master bedroom, master bathroom, master closet, two bedrooms, then one bathroom. The project also includes a new projecting front porch and rear addition will create a covered space along the rear elevation. And the additional floor area and other modifications are generally in keeping with the existing architecture. The proposed residence is similar to homes in the area with its use of hip roof forms, projecting porch, low pitch roof and articulated amassing. And overall, staff does believe that project is well integrated to reflect the character of the area. The project is in keeping with the scale of structures found in the neighborhood. The second story is centered over the first story to minimize the perception of bulk. The proposed nine foot to nine foot six inch tall first-story wall plates are compatible with the eight to nine foot plates in the neighborhood. The nine-foot second-story plate is partially concealed within the existing roof along the front elevation and minimized by the use of single-story elements along the left and right and partially along the rear elevation. And the project eve lines are are very horizontal in appearance, maintain a lower profile, and the stone wing scotting also reinforces that effect or appearance. There, there are no potential privacy issues along the front elevation, along the left side. There are two windows, one window is a four-foot, a four-foot six-inch sill height, and a second window is located in the bay window along the right rear elevation. Staff does not believe these windows will result in significant privacy issues surrounding properties. Along the right elevation on the second story, there are two windows, one small-sized window with a four-foot eight-inch sill height and one small-sized window in the bay window, again, with a three-foot six-inch sill height. Due to the small size of the window and the sill height of the bathroom window, staff does not believe it will create significant privacy impacts. The bedroom number two window, which is in the bay window, the, there may be a perception of privacy impacts. The applicant has worked with staff to incorporate evergreen screening along the sides and rear. Therefore, as design staff does believe with recommended conditions, that the project maintains a reasonable degree of privacy. Along the rear second-story elevation, there are, there are two large-sized windows, one bedroom in number two, one in bedroom number three with three foot six sill heights. The windows have an approximate forty-one foot setback, twenty-four feet to the right side and twenty-two point four feet to the left side. The potential privacy impacts are reduced for adjacent properties. The applicant is proposing evergreen screening along the side and rear to ensure that there are no potential privacy impacts. Staff is recommending condition number three to to fill in any unscreened portions of the property line to reduce any potential privacy impacts. On sheet A O one is an example of the materials board and and the color choices for the property. There are four trees on the property. The project is proposing to remove one tree, which is a cypress tree. At the time of this middle and our site visit, staff was not aware that the cypress tree was removed from the site. And the applicant could speak to that specifically. With the existing new trees and new landscaping and hardscape, the project does meet the city's landscape regulations. There are conditions to address issues of water-efficient landscaping in case the applicant does remove more than twenty-five hundred square feet of landscaping. And overall, the the existing and proposed landscaping meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations. This concludes the presentation, are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sean. Jude, are you back?
I am back, thank you.
Yeah, okay, welcome back. Yeah, so thank you again, Sean, good job. So let's see, any questions for Sean to start this off?
None.
I guess I go through my list.
Yeah, I had a question about the tree, but you answered.
Okay, Michael? Questions?
He's, he's muted.
He's muted, okay, he'll find us in a minute.
No, 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 no question.
Oh, thanks, Michael. Jude, do you have a question?
No questions.
For Sean? And I have none either, so thank you, Sean, good job. So do we have the owner or the architect here to present?
We do.
Yes, we're here, this is Wendy.
Great.
Hi, hi, everyone, I'm Chair Bishop and Commissioners. I'm gonna start sharing my screen.
Please.
Okay, um, and then I'm gonna hand the first part of presentation to Architect Matt to speak to the plan. Matt, are you there?
Yes, please, please proceed.
He is on the call. But his video is off, his audio shows on.
Oh.
So Matt Liu, you said, right? Matt, this is Guido from the City of Los Altos, are you still on the call? He is not responding, Chair Bishop.
So I can. Hey, Matt, can you hear us? Matt, this is Wendy, you're on speaker, can you please present? Okay, um. Okay, let me, let me quickly just go to our side. I want to kind of give you a sense of what our family is like and because we're the occupants of the of this new house. There are totally five of us. My parents have lived at four sixes Avenue since nineteen ninety-nine. I I lived there with them from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and five. My dad unfortunately passed away last Thanksgiving, so temporarily my mom had moved in with my family in a three-bedroom house. It's getting really crowded, so we are proposing to expand the house so all five of us can move back to four sixes Avenue, so we can take care of my mom. So there's my husband, David, and Julia, my daughter, who's fifteen years old, rising. And our son James, thirteen years old, rising eighth grade. And our family have a deep connection with the city of Los Altos. We are longtime residents, we love everything Los Altos has to offer, such as bar and shop, farmer marketing on Thursday nights. We visit Los Altos library regularly and take advantage of the downtown shops and restaurants. We have our best memory at this house because the kids growing up, the kids visit my parents at least twice a week. So it's a family gathering place and then the kids uses the swimming pool in the summer. And then so we're really looking forward to move back with my moms. We have enough room and then and we can also take care of her now that my dad has passed away. So that's the history of the house and the occupants. I'm gonna quickly move back and then see, Matt, are you back? And I I still apologize. Let me quickly go on mute and then see if I can give her him a call. So sorry about that.
Chair Bishop, through you to Wendy. Wendy, if you, if you're not able to get your designer, I think you've done a good job of explaining why you need the the space. You you might want to elaborate on kind of what was your thought process that you guys gave for the design? If we can't get your designer on the phone, just to, just to fill out all of your comments, so.
Yes, absolutely, I I will be happy to, let me just share my screen again. So, yeah. Okay, so we we've taken out the swimming pool in the back and then I think Commissioner David talked about the tree. And then we do apologize removing the cypress tree before this meeting. So we we checked with Architect if it was okay to remove the tree. And then he said that the tree is smaller than what's required to get a permit from the city. And then we're in the process of filling up the, demolishing the pool and 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 then so so we can, you know, have a bigger backyard. And then the the workers need 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 to kind of put down, take down the tree in order to get their machinery into the the backyard. And then so and and then we talked to Sean and then Sean made us aware that we should have kept the tree until we spoke to the commission. So we do apologize for that. My understanding is the tree is not of a very good specimen, so we are happy to replace the tree with better specimen and 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 then kind of remedy this. So just want to kind of quickly talk about the tree, but yeah, so the the thought process. Is Matt able to join us?
I, he's having problems, audio problem, I have to text you, but write a comment in the.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
In the room.
So, so I I think in terms of changes that we're making, the first, the the change on the first floor is very limited. We are moving the front porch out a little bit. So the overall, the house on the first floor is not moving either in or out, it's gonna stay very much the same. It is just the part of the front porch is going to get pushed out a little bit. And then we we have re-planned the first floor, so my mom will have a a kind of a suite so she can, she can live in and then so she doesn't have to climb stairs. And and then on the second floor is where we made most of the significant changes for there's more room for for the four of us to kind of have three bedrooms. And I think the garage is gonna stay the same. And I apologize because I I did, I couldn't speak the technical terms, but because we need to adhere to to the daylight planes, so we have to move the second floor out. And then that's why we're gonna kind of create a port in the backyard. Sorry, I'm trying to show you, yeah, so so the second floor is gonna be extended beyond the first floor. So so we're gonna have a kind of natural porch that that's gonna result on the first floor. And and then I think I'm trying to think anything else that's significant. No, I I think that's it, the windows on the sides are very small. So like like Sean saying, we don't believe this is gonna cause any privacy issue and then we are gonna and 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 then follow the city direction and employing all the privacy measures. We have spoke to the neighbors surrounding us, so the neighbors next to us as well as the neighbors across the street and then the neighbor in our back. They are supportive of the project, we have not heard any concerns. And then, but will continue to some throughout the project to 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 address any concern that they have, which so far we have not received any, most neighbors have expressed the support and they they're just happy that there's gonna be new house. And then since we're currently, the current house is a story and it's gonna continue to be a two-story home, there is not a whole lot of concern that they have expressed. Yeah, so any, any questions?
Okay, all right, Wendy, yeah, thank you, you actually did, you did a great job there. It's a good set of plans, they were pretty, pretty easy, at least for me, to read through. I don't have any questions, but we'll, we'll go through the list. Jude, do you have any questions for Wendy or the designer does get on the telephone?
Well, my my only question would be, this really looks like a new house to me, if you really think about it. Just curious, do you understand that it's a new house? Because you're rebuilding all the walls throughout the house, increased plate heights, increased floor heights, the whole new second story. So just want to, is that true in your understanding, Wendy?
Yeah, so and it it's not, so you absolutely right that there's significant change to the house in terms of, especially on the second floor. But on the first floor, there's no change in the garage, to my understanding. And then also the existing first floor is pretty much the same, except in the front.
Wait, wait.
Okay.
And Matt?
Sorry, we're getting, he he's having, our architect's having audio issues, but we're getting him on my, on the speaker so he can speak, go ahead, Matt. Go ahead, we can hear you. Matt, are you talking? I'm sorry, Matt, we cannot hear you. Is there any chance you can call in the number?
Guido, can we have the architect just dial directly into the call?
Um, absolutely, to to help them out, Chair Bishop, let me, let me go back into the original meeting invite. Let me go on my computer and let me send it to Matt, hold on one second, okay? Just give me a.
Thank you.
Give me a sec.
Take your time, thank you.
Let me pull this up. So I have, let's see, where is it? Yeah, here we go, this is the original invite and I will send it to, one second. Probably have him in my system.
Guido, I sent an email right now to Matt with the phone number and information, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully he does get that, so he can call in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just spoke to Matt, he said he's gonna check the plan.
Okay, so what we'll try to do then is we'll get Matt on the audio portion of the call, Wendy. And it sounds like we have some specific questions. Jude started off with one, it'd be great to get a clear answer from him and that will help us come to a a more accurate conclusion tonight.
Yep, sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Hi. Yes, um, yeah, good evening, everyone, yeah. This is Matt Liu, I'm the designer for this project. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present in this prop project. The scope of the work for this project actually is where it stood forward, okay? We actually exist in, the existing building. We actually exist in, the existing building. Let me, let me share the my screen, okay? Oh, I can't see my quick screen right now. Sorry. Sorry, I don't know.
Matt, I think you better.
Yeah. The slides, you know, you have, actually this project is very straightforward, but the existing building actually is too solid, okay? The only, you know, things we demo the second floor and redo, okay? And we actually, we, because we add a little more footage and also this demolition tracking, tracking the, you know, we had to compare the new updated code. So we had to sit back the wall, second floor wall on each side on extend to the rear yard about 10 feet. So this was also creating a patio on the second floor, okay? Actually, the only change is the, the extended the second floor to work the rear yard on have the patio on. They raised about two and a half feet, the plate height in total with the first floor raising one half feet and the second floor, one foot, okay? So that's all we, you know, the school work. Okay, so I think this is most of this Wendy already presented, okay? So I don't want to repeat that. So that's very simple.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you.
So that's fine. No, no, don't, don't, don't leave, stay please.
Oh, no, I'm staying, yeah.
Okay, fine. So yes, Wendy, Wendy did fine filling in. Thank you again, Wendy. What we typically do now is if we have questions, we would like to ask you a few. And Commissioner Kirk, would you open up with the with the first question, please?
Well, once again, I'm just looking at the plans and I'm seeing the changes. You're, you're changing the footprint, you're changing the wall heights. You're basically tearing off the roof, you're eliminating the second story and rebuilding it. I mean, at this point, you know, given all the loads that are gonna come down, all the upgrading for seismic purposes, you'd be, it would behoove you just as a friendly piece of advice to build a new home instead of trying to call this a remodel. So I'm curious whether that was ever a consideration, looking at the plans.
Actually, you know, okay, yeah, we actually remodeled the first floor. On the reason a little bit, you know, one foot for the, you know, the second floor. That's all they, you know, make their changes.
Okay, well, that was just a basic question, so I'll move on, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, Jude, thank you. Sam, do you have a question for the owner or the architect, please?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Michael?
Yeah, I have a question for the designer or the owner. The roof pitch, the existing is 4 to 12. And what's the reason you want to change to 5 to 12? Any particular reason?
No, actually, five, you know, five to that also very popular. Actually, you can see those pitch around, you know, those neighborhood. So that's no, we did just look, you know, just prefer, you know, the owner prefer, you know, have a, let the steep pitch that looks better, yeah?
Okay. And then my second question, actually, going back to Commissioner Siri, but with more detail. So you raising the entire ground floor ceiling, right, from eight foot to nine foot six?
Yes.
So that will require you to demolish the entire second floor, right?
Yes.
Okay, so is the second floor will be brand new, not mentioned about.
Yeah, brand new second floor.
Okay. So and then the ground floor is almost, okay. Okay, that's all I had. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michael. David?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, thanks, David. This is Frank. I don't have any questions either. So, great. Guido, next step would be any, anyone from the public on this project, do you know?
Let me check, Chair Bishop. I'm just double checking.
I'm here.
Who is this? I'm sorry.
Haritha Naga, I'm right next door to the home, 476 Ben Menue Avenue.
It's up, it's up to the chair to give you two or three minutes, so I'll leave that to him, so.
Please proceed. You have two minutes to discuss.
Thank you.
Your thoughts. Yep.
So, you know, just, you know, when we moved here, it was about 10 years ago, we did a, you know, minor remodel on our own home. And, you know, related to the setbacks, is that why? I mean, so basically because it's technically, you know, as Mr. Carrick brought up that, you know, versus a remodel versus a completely new home, the setbacks are allowed the way that they are versus changing because one of the problems we've had with the home is just a lot of noise with just two people in the home. So I'm just concerned about that because we are very close. And then the other concern for us is really privacy. We're still working on our backyard landscaping. We want to, you know, put in a jacuzzi and, you know, I see a bunch of windows, so I'm concerned because the upstairs obviously is jutting out versus how it used to be. And already there was a lot of noise and, you know, not so much privacy. So that's my biggest concern. Otherwise, the house, to me, the downstairs, everything seems fine. I'm just concerned about noise because it was two people, like Wendy mentioned, her parents, and now, you know, there's five. And with the setbacks that the way they are, it looks like it's non-conforming. So just trying to understand that and privacy obviously is a big issue for us.
Okay, could you give us your address, please? And which side of the subject property you're located on?
So if you're looking at the driveway, we're the house on the left, 476 Ben Menue.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up, I have a 5107097968. Did you want to speak? No, okay. And who else? I don't think Mr. Bear wants to speak, but I just wanted to. Mr. Bear, did you want to speak on this item? John, are you still there? Okay, I, no. I believe that's it, Chair Bishop.
Okay, Guido, thank you. Then we'll close the public comments section and open it up to the commission discussion. So Jude, where we missed you, why don't you, in the last one, why don't you kick this one off for us?
Well, I'm well rested and ready to go.
There we go.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty straightforward for me. You know, once again, I encourage the architect and the homeowner to be realistic. I would, I would consider rebuilding this house from the ground up, just knowing what's gonna be entailed to call this a remodel. But I think A dash 0.3 tells the story. The home is over four feet taller than it was previously, and that's mostly due to the increased plate heights on the first floor and the second floor. You know, the original home nestles, the second story nestles quite nicely into the roof line of the first story, much like the home next door at 456 Ben Menue. So, you know, to me, this is a simple reduction of plate heights to not only reduce bulk and mass, but also be more consistent with the adjoining neighbors. I think the neighbor that just spoke on the left at 476 is actually gonna benefit from this design as it moves the second story further away from the property. And looking at the windows, I think there's fewer windows, yet there is some truth to the fact that the second story is projecting more into the rear yard. But I think in general, the shape of the design, if it could be, once again, reduce the plate heights to more, something more in line with what we typically see, nine feet on the first story and maybe eight feet on the second story with the understanding that they vault ceilings on the second story to get that increased height. And, you know, I have no problem with the steeper roof pitch at five and 12 versus four and 12, but looking at the adjoining neighbors, they all seem to be four and 12. So this is a little bit out of character with the adjoining neighbors. So just a few things to consider.
Okay, that's good analysis, actually. Thank you, Jude. Sam, any comments?
No, no, no comment.
Thank you, Sam. All right, that's, that's good. Michael?
Yeah, yes, yes, I'm here. Yeah, it's pretty much same, you know, pretty same comment with the Commissioner Carrick. You know, this is the narrow lot. So, so the setback, it's less than 10 feet. I mean, it's actually six, seven feet, something like that. So it's closer to the neighbors. So the plate height is too high, the ground floor, and then raise six, nine foot six. The second floor is, the second floor is also.
Nine feet.
Nine feet, yeah, it's too high. I also noticed some detail that I know you tried to make it to, you know, to below the daylight plan. I think the second floor eve is shorter than the ground floor. So I, but, you know, it's better to make it more consistent on the eve and everything. Yeah, so that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Michael. David?
Yeah, I pretty much concur with everybody. The only other thing I throw in there is is potentially put in the documents, you know, replace the tree or sufficient. It talks about getting the landscape or an arborist report, but have some sort of landscape plan specifically to do the front tree that was replaced. And not necessarily a landscape, but a replacement tree.
I thought that, oh, it was a front tree? This is the one they took out to could remove the pool, cypress?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, we can add that, make sure that that's replaced. Yeah, okay. Anything else, David?
No.
Okay, so I agree with, with Jude that I don't know why the plate heights have to be that high off of this effectively new house, which it is, given the neighborhood and the narrow lot. And I would think that they would keep the conforming roof pitch to make it fit well into the neighborhood. So, I mean, there's small details, but I think it would just improve, improve, it would improve the fit of the house into the neighborhood on both of those categories. That's all I had. Any other thoughts from the commission?
Yeah, I just want to add that overall, it's, it looks more vertical. I mean, the neighbor, the left and right look more horizontal, even though it's two-story house, existing house, it looks horizontal. But now the proposed remodel addition looked more vertical.
Yeah, right. I agree. Yeah, yep. Okay. I mean, any, any thoughts? Not a lot of questions on this one. It's, it is kind of what it is. So would someone want to try to make a motion to see if we could wrap this one up?
I'll talk tonight. I, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve SC 21-0001, the remodel at 466 Ben Menue Avenue per the conditions and findings and conditions as listed in the staff report with the additional conditions that, one, the applicant replacing kind the cypress tree that was removed. And two, the plate heights on the first floor be reduced to no greater than nine feet and the second floor be reduced to no greater than eight feet. And the roof pitch, I'm gonna leave that at the discretion of the applicant, but I would encourage them to reduce it to be more consistent with the adjoining neighbors.
Thanks, Jude. Is there a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds, okay? Thank you, thank you. So we'll, we'll call, call the roll. So Jude?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Frank votes aye, so unanimous approved as discussed. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
So that's. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so that concludes, I believe, the discussion section of the evening, which brings us down to commissioners' reports and comments. Does anyone have a report or a comment?
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead, Sam.
Just briefly, that I wanted to commend staff for the extent that they went to to cover the issue of historical, non-historical. It's, I could only see that being, if that had not been done, I think the way that you did it, just another lawsuit hanging over our heads. So I'm happy that you proceeded and have that done in this particular project.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Harding. And a lot of the credit does go to Eric, the deputy city attorney. He did give us a lot of good legal advice in terms of historic resources, so we just want to recognize Eric, so.
Eric, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good job. Yeah, good job. Any other reports or comments from the committee?
Yeah, yeah, I just have a comment or suggestion, and I don't know whether this is appropriate form or not, but I would make a recommendation that the city, anything kind of related to DRC or housing, construction, anything like that, talk about the bedrooms, the, what used to be called the master bedroom, call that the primary bedroom, and then secondary, third and fourth bedroom.
Good point.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything formally you need to do and anything like that. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I'd like to make that as a suggestion.
So you want us to just label on the plans, like primary bedroom and all that, or?
Yeah, I mean, in the real estate world, it's, everyone's getting away from master bedroom and calling that particular term, you know, offensive to certain groups and calling that room. The primary bedroom.
Oh, okay. No, thank you. I didn't realize, okay. Yeah, let me make a note of that. Okay, so don't call things master. I didn't real, okay. I didn't realize that that was a thing now, okay? Don't. Thank you.
It is in the news.
It is a thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks, thanks, David. Any, any other reports or comments?
Well, I have two comments. One, first of all, I appreciate the new increased signage size. So driving around, it looks better.
Thank you, thank you.
I did notice some additional paperwork tagged on a few of the, one of the projects down at East, Eastwood. So I don't know if people were hanging additional stuff on the signage, but I thought that was quite clever, so if I didn't read it.
Cool.
And then the other thing is, and I talked to Chair Bishop about this, is, and I know Commissioner Harding has requested this, and I requested this a couple meetings ago, but I really, really, really would appreciate hard copies of all the materials going forward. I find it exceptionally hard to review these projects as I'm looking on them on screen and, you know, a couple of the items I could not print out because the link was bad. So I would appreciate, I know it's COVID still, but I think as a courtesy to the commissioners who spend a lot of time getting the packets back in our hand would be much appreciated.
Okay. Yeah, I'm kind of waiting on direction in terms of, I know the council's still digital and of COVID and all that. Okay, yeah, I, I'm kind of waiting on direction in terms of, I know the council's still digital and of COVID and all that, so yeah, definitely take that under consideration, but um probably waiting to get some further direction from council in terms of how they're handling their packets.
Yeah, their, their paperwork's a little different. You know, drawings are harder to review digitally um than eight and a half by 11 type written sheets of paper. Staff reports being fine, but drawings themselves, it's helpful to have them print it out in front of you to page back and forth.
duly noted.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Plus, I, I tend to draw on them, so very useful for me. Uh, Jude, you had another, you had another question. Do you, do you recall? I, I do if you don't, so.
Uh, my memory's fading at this point, but please go ahead.
Yeah.
Remind me what I
So Jude's other question was, when are we going back live? Uh, and I know we've asked it before, but he wanted to ask it, and I think it's a, it's a good question.
Yeah.
In chamber.
Yeah, the council is taking up kind of what we're doing with meetings on August 24th. So, um, once again, trying to hear back what the direction from the council is, and then we kinda follow suit, so I won't have an answer tonight for you guys on that. I'll have to report out later, so.
Okay.
The
That was, yeah.
Yeah, part of the reason I bring that up again is sometimes, like tonight, we didn't see a material board with the colors on the, well, I can't comment on the, the one project, but you know, typically when we're in person, we see renderings, we see material boards. It's just a lot easier to do these meetings.
So, um, Guido, maybe, maybe use the persuasive ability of the DRC would like to be the leader in the back to the, back to the meeting format and then will take all reasonable precautions in doing so. How about that?
Sure, I can talk with, yeah, I mean, that's
We're starting to run into discussion of something that's not on the agenda, so I think we can call those duly noted and move on. I apologize, but
It's good to have a, an attorney on site.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, that's true. Uh, all right, Jude, so thanks. Any, anything else or Guido, do you have anything for else for us, I guess, as far as future items?
I've got one item for September 1st and then the 41 Marvin will come back on September 15th.
Okay. Okay.
And uh, yeah, Sean, actually, I don't know if you guys have realized, but Sean's actually taken five or six projects in the last month, month and a half, so uh you get a chance, send him a nice email. This, you know, he's been working really hard to help these customers out, so yeah, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sean.
Right, thank you, Sean.
He always does, yeah, he always does a good job. All right, so my, my clock here says it's 10 o'clock, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting and I'll look forward to seeing everyone at the, at the next DRC.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good evening, everyone. Good night.
Good evening.